I would like to call the September 22nd meeting to order at 7:02. If you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Let's go to approval of agenda. We are all set. Moving anything to hand off. So we move to the approval of minutes. I will intervene in motion to approve the August 25th and the September 8th minutes.
Do you ready to tell us a move?
Tony, hold second.
Is anyone have any corrections at this time? Okay, we can do a roll call. Jacob?
Hold stand. Hi.
Me?
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Amy?
Dana?
Hi.
Well, therefore, the minutes are approved as is. Now, at this time, I would like to welcome the public participation. I'm just going ahead and read that. The members of the town Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate, to do so, members of the board and administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. Once you raise your hand, if you could, please say your name and address, and you will be given two minutes on our wonderful timer that we have on our screen. Okay, I mean, public at this point. Raise your hand. Okay, let's move on to correspondence. Tony?
Well, I thank you, Madam Chair. We received an email inviting the board members to the Birch Grove grand opening. Email concerning quote-unquote remote learning absences counting as sick days. Writer is concerned that this will create the risk that students could get held back due to reaching the maximum number of allowable mistakes. Email concerned with the types of masks worn to school and how that will be evaluated. Email concerned with the effect of daytime parent-teacher conferences on working parents. Email asking for how to advocate for one of the parent-teacher conferences to be in the evening. Email from the town children or young adult librarian with flyers for upcoming events. Email asking about the plan for continued education for kids who have to be quarantined, given the lack of a vaccine for young students. And an email asking board members to participate in a survey pertaining the funds from the American Rescue Plan and how they should be used.
Thank you very much, Tony. Okay, at this point, we will open up the points of information for any board members who would like to do so, or Dr. Willett, if you have anything that you would like to say. Paul?
I just want to say in regards to the emails about quarantines, I'm hoping Dr. Willett has an update on what we're going to do for these kids during the COVID update. So I won't get into it now, but I think I recognize it as probably, you probably do too, Dr. Willett.
Yeah, I was also along the same lines. You know, it is concerning.
I just want to, you know, give a thank you to, when I have a good kindergartner and a senior this year, and I'm absolutely amazed at the progress that they are both making in just a brief amount of time. So to the staff, to the administration, you know, sincerely appreciate all the effort.
Awesome. I will say that I wanted to just give a thanks to the Tepco for the Birch Grove opening. It was a very lovely event. I think I could say for all of us, it was fantastic. Having my kids have a great time and it was really awesome. So thank you very much. Anyone else? Because I will move on to student representatives, and we have new ones, so.
Hello.
Emily?
Yes.
And then Natalie.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you guys so much. So welcome. So you guys have this opportunity to just let us know what's going on.
So in student council right now, we're working on communicating with Mr. Paul about events this year, like dances, spirit weeks, and we can get that back into the school this year to try to get it look normal again. We have, we're actually starting a world language honor society in my school right now, which is super exciting for people who learn Latin language. And also, our chorus and band members are working on getting their performance back this year. So our first concert is scheduled for October 28th. That's right. Not really.
Are you enjoying being up at school?
Yes, a lot.
Seeing your friends?
Yeah, it's really nice.
Having lockers?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, thank you guys and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for them? Okay. Um, let's go ahead and let's go to H1, the monthly financial report for Dr. Willett.
So. So, as you know, every, every beginning of the month, we have first meeting typically, the monthly financial report. The last couple of months, we, as we were exiting the lessons previous fiscal year, entering a new one, there's not a whole lot of movement, but so generally July and August are months that we don't know if we want until, say, September where we're doing the end of August. So a few noteworthy highlights, you know, those of you who do, you can see Mr. McLaughlin's letter. It essentially highlights generally where we are in the year and what our balances are. I'm going to give you a couple of highlights as of August 31st. And so I won't read the full letter that Mr. McLaughlin put out. Or I'd focus on some of these highlights. You can also see online that what's included in this is the one pager that gives you all the financial information in the various areas that comprise the overall budget. So salaries are currently over, and it's right now, that's due to some of the grant money that we are getting. We have not yet received. So the associate educators, new teachers, you know, associate educators, about 87,000. New teachers are about 120,000. Give you an example, S R 2 grant funds will be used for that. So those are going to backfill into the budget. But currently, those would be looked at, you know, that would help make that balance. Native 240 for E S Y summer for three or four teaching staff members. And also, there's the social worker and the school counselor to part of the ministry. So these are going to result in us having a negative line until that money comes back in, or deficits there until that money gets backfilled by the grant. Those grants are in process for complying with the elastic of the grants. So don't expect any trouble or issues with that. Substitute available balance right now is 190 under. It's just the beginning of the year, so you know, we should be going through that. You know, overtime, generally they're not covered. You know, we're just starting again. Stipends, we have not collected any paid-a-place, and naturally, that's going to be a little bit over health insurance. Employee benefits are collectively under. We haven't really gotten there yet. And this, everything in the beginning of the year, you know, this is where it's all starting. So it's some of these things are going to be high-balanced, available balance. And like Medicare, Social Security again, it's going to be retirement, unemployment. Those things are collectively under, but you know, this is the end of August. Benefit consultants, computer workers, com balances, they're on target more or less to where we would expect them to be. Legal audit tech, they're under, but you know, this is August again. Repair maintenance, cleaning, custodial, supplies, all of those kinds of things. Some expenses may increase now that, you know, the B G P project is done and we're dealing with a new building. There may be some unanticipated things this year that just we have to work out and we would budget for in the coming year. So, you know, right now, it's pretty much as we'd expect it to be, but there might be some, some transition there. As of the end of August, transportation was under, but bus routes had not really been created. And the invoice for transportation services has not really, did not come in at that point. So the available balance is going to decrease dramatically. Once all the encumbrances get paid out, we start paying the contractual obligations to the company. Specialized tuitions are starting year under. The available balance will change as the district begins to place students in specialized services. It's an unpredictable year. We do not have some of the same conditions that we did before. You know, we had some benefits at the end of last year for transportation and salaries and tuition, but we can expect the tuition-bearing programs to reinstate all of the things they were doing before. So that will probably balance out to a typical year. Transportation, we don't anticipate saving anything on transportation like we did last year, because we're fully transporting this year. And we expect to have full staffing this year or close to it, which is not the same as last year. So while last year had some things that ended, you know, with some balances this year, we don't expect to have the same situation. And if you really take a, you know, a real look at the number from the end of last year, the three biggest contributors to that were the salaries of people that we hadn't paid, you know, and the differential, the transportation that came back and the tuition that was unexpended. His kids were not engaged in this.
Yeah. Oh, thanks.
So energy expenses get transferred to the Universal Internal Service Fund or U S F. Textbooks are obviously not fully expended, because we're just starting construction supplies similarly. It's going to be under, because we're not really spending fully yet. So those are some of the major highlights. And now I can take down questions and then come back to some answers if you want. My own notepad and get ready. I'm having a little trouble opening that sheet though, so I'm just.
You let me know when you're ready, Dr. Willett. Don't want you to miss a part of the question.
There you go. Or. Okay, shoot.
Just around the salaries, do we have, I know staffing was an issue last, not an issue, but it's been tough to fill positions statewide. Do we have a lot of vacancies that you're still trying to fill?
You know, I haven't had access to the individual that I wanted to ask a few questions about. Right now, not as many as we did last year by far, by far. So we do, this year's COVID animal will be a different animal, because last year was largely due to no vaccinations available and the things. A lot of people just were, you know, sitting out the innings, right? That's not the case now. So it's more like everybody's looking. So, you know, the people that, for instance, busing is really difficult for some places. You're not staffed, you know, people are just not enough people. So it's not, now it's not people fleeing the environment as much as the environments need more, and there's not as many people out there who are there. So we are not in anywhere near the position we were last year, but we do have some positions that I'm trying to fill. Most recently, the associate educators, which we were able to place two more again this last week. There'll be a little fluctuation, but no worries.
And one more question in regards to, so the associate educators are helping with the alternative to in-person learning, correct?
Yes, so.
I was careful, I don't want to call it remote learning, because now with the issues of the quarantines, I'm wondering if there's vacancies still, if there's dollars there maybe to go to the unions and potentially pay teachers extra stipends for doing a hybrid-type synchronous learning with some of these quarantine students.
Yeah, I mean, if you're paying a stipend, it's then outside of the hours.
Or hourly, I think I've heard Manchester pay the teachers hourly.
And that's a concept, but for instance, I, I don't think that's a good idea. And the reason is that all indications are that hybrid classrooms are less effective learning environments for everyone involved, for the kids that are there and the kids that are all. Most teachers will tell you that, that it's very difficult to split the attention. And so the problem is, and this is more for COVID report, maybe, but I'll answer a little bit of it now, that while we may have a situation, especially in the earlier part of the year, where we'll have quarantines, the kids may be quarantined from somewhere between five and 10 days. And that does, you know, we have associate educators, reach out to the family, reach out to the teacher, you know, they'll do some video sessions with the kids, get them through that period of time. It's really looked at more as an illness, because they're potentially positive. It's not the same as the remote learning from last year, where it was straight hundreds of children in that remote environment. So the problem is, if we turn on all the cameras and make that hybrid again, those 10 kids who are quarantined will disrupt the education of 100 kids. Or the 16 that are quarantined will disrupt the education of 175, because they have seven classes and they're spread out all throughout the building, throughout all the classes. And we know that the classes have a poor educational experience compared to a typical experience when you're splitting it. So the irony is that while that child might have a five or eight or whatever 10-day slightly better video experience, even though it's shown that they can't really sit in one place for eight hours on a computer, and you know, seven hours on a computer anyway, that's bad. They might have that for five, 10 days. But then when they get back, if that's happening regularly in their classroom, the teacher has to constantly on, off, split the attention, do this online, try to manage this in person, do that. Then that child who had maybe a, you know, not-so-great COVID quarantine is going to have that negative impact on their education for the rest of the year sporadically, in and out, on and off, as kids come in and out, will have to have videos on or off. It's a bad model. So it's a, it's a year where we're going to, you know, as the year goes on, and these vaccinations, for instance, become available for the children that are in the population that are younger, a lot of these quarantines will be less impactful. And they, they are right now in a lower frequency than they were in the past. So, you know, we're going to keep ramping up the associate educator connection and resource. You have Google classrooms available, the work is available, the associate educators reach out, act a liaison. And that way, you know, that experience is better than if they were sick of the flu for two weeks. But we're not compromising the entire education system and everybody else in it, because it made sense when everyone has no, you know, had to, and the remote was hundreds of people, and it was ubiquitous, and there were no vaccines. But applying that model to now hurts many more children, you know, and for a longer period of time.
To be continued during the COVID.
I have a lot.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to see if there was.
Well, I like what you're, you're going with that, because is there a way that we can have an associate educator, whether, because like she was saying, a stipend, but have one per grade that would do the curriculum? So it would be online teaching, because all the, all the classes do relatively.
So right now, associate educators have a certain position in the district with respect to their responsibilities. If I try to put an associate educator into a classroom as the teacher, I can imagine there might be some implications for that, and there may be some opposition to that with respect to bargaining and violations of who has the responsibility of being educated. So the option of pulling a grade out, a teacher per grade, means we're removing them from classroom, which once again negatively impacts hundreds.
You're pulling them out of. Necessarily a teacher, like, you know, whether we do try to work out with the, you know, associate educator or a parent or, because I mean, I'm just thinking myself, if you have a student that's going to take a test and they're just doing that all by themselves, you know, is there a way that we could get that student in front of someone to learn a lesson, because they absorb it?
Well.
And so, you know, is there a way that we can do something with the salary line to ensure?
Well, theoretically, the, the associate educators would be linking up with the child. And if the child say is doing pretty good with the L A and the assignments are going okay, but is really struggling with math, that associate educator then would have that virtual kind of video session, maybe directly with them to help them with math or something like that. But that, that's different than, say, having them run an entire classroom, say, of virtual people, because the problem is that, once we transition over to this class is the responsibility, not just you're, you know, you're my, you're on my case and I'm helping you as a student. Once you're my class, then we're looking at bringing teachers and that, and we can't. But the thing is, we're taking them out of somewhere else. So if we were trying to create a teacher per even school, we're going to be pulling four teachers out of the classroom, which will increase those class sizes. And they're not even needed all the time. They may be on for five days, off for another day, on for these days, and we're actually compromising an entire series of classrooms to have an on-and-off arrangement, you know, when it appears sporadically. So we can pull teachers out of classrooms to do that and make that one for school or even one for grade, but that'll increase the, increase the class sizes and lower the quality of education in those classrooms for the duration of that year or time. So these are going to be a little frustrating, especially in the beginning, but those associate educators working in collaboration with the teacher and then outreach to the families, I think will help bridge those, you know, roughly short periods of time, until we can get through this stage in the pandemic. If everything shifts sideways again and everybody has to go remote, well, then we have to, you know, return to the remote model. But let's be very clear, the state of Connecticut just put out data saying that the remote model was a disaster for all of these families and that it just wrecked education. And all the scores went down, particularly in math, and math was a disaster. So we can't, on one hand, just put out a report saying, hey, man, this model was terrible and it wrecked everything for everyone all year, but go ahead, do it again, just do it again, you know, make that happen.
No, so I, and I, you know, I just think that when we're having this conversation of, you know, budget-wise, and seeing the salaries and know that we have this issue that's floating about, you know, like, how can we address it, is, you know, more or less?
And I think this is a, this is a conversation of the lesser of the evils. And there's no perfect solution. So that means that there is, you know, and I get it, this is frustrating, it's ridiculous, it's annoying. You know, we've all had situations with having to have our kids tested and, you know, the ups and downs of this entire year, you know, 18 months plus now. But, you know, what I'm going to respectfully offer is that, I get it, it's extremely frustrating. It's, you know, my numbing is really painful, but that the lesser of the evil is having the associate educators work with the kids for the duration of the quarantine. The greater evil will be pulling our teachers out of classrooms for sole focus in this way, or reinstituting remotely into classrooms on and off and on and off, as kids quarantining in and out. It's so disruptive, it's such a mess, that what that'll do is it'll take this group of people who are quarantined and magnify the effect across now 100, you know, 100 kids. Every time that happens, because it'll be across many classrooms. So, you know, the quarantines are really not, you know, they're very frustrating. We're going to have support for the kids while they're in that. But if we try to switch on the cameras again, it's just going to bring us back to the really bad model that resulted in lots of learning loss for kids across Connecticut. So I think we're going to have those sporadic, you know, periods for people in quarantine. I think they'll become less and less as the year goes on.
Yeah, we can talk more about the quarantine, but you know.
Yeah.
So it's not, just again, it's the less of the. Of course, was the salaries and bringing. Here's a problem. No problem. Okay, so anyone else with the budget questions? Financially, everyone's good with the financials, I have to say. I attended the F F C and it was fantastic, even though Claire was making a lot of noise, right? So we're listening.
And we did talk about this, which is why we probably don't have any questions, just so you don't think that we're.
Okay, let's move on to the capital budget.
Okay, so I'm going to try to do this, enable a little bit here, because I want to put up the capital for people to see. I don't know what the name is. Um. All right, so I loaded up on the screen for the public. Hopefully, you can kind of mess with your own monitors to help you see this a little bit more. I want to go over some basic elements of the capital. As you know, the capital budget request, I feel like there are data.
We all do.
So I'm just doing this here breathing. So the, the capital budget request is due to the town on October 7th. So it's a past timeline, we come right out of the summer with all kinds of needs and greatness. And, you know, the town understandably needs to get organized, and so this comes up pretty quick. The F F C did a fantastic job of, you know, with looking at this, they looked at it during the summer in August, and then it manifests itself in another review as we got closer. And that's kind of what you're seeing in front of you now, is the culmination of those efforts and working with F F C on it. So a couple of things about the, the document. We, we used to have just this running page thing of 20 pages and all kinds of things. Now we have this document that gives you a really good idea where these things fall and the standard of the timeline of the five years. And the link at the bottom also links you up to all the materials. And so while almost everything is there, the new stuff is still being loaded by Pete, so, or Mr. Staba. So you'll see that a lot of stuff and a lot of the documentation or disaggregation of like the invoices or the material, that's on the website and it, and it has all the historical stuff. But a couple of the items, we have them listed and I can talk to them and about them, but the exact invoices and so on are in the process of getting finalized. And that does happen through, you know, almost October, you know, the October 7th timeline. So a lot of stuff's there, and everything will be there by the time this event to the town. The yellow represents capital request through fiscal year 2020, actually, 2007. The brown represents the, the funds that were carried over from the fiscal year 18 for B O E capital projects. The green represents town bonded project status items, which are, you know, fiscal year 19 to 21. And as, you know, those are actually coming to a culmination now. The purple represents the W O, which is, we need to find another acronym, but it's, when opportunity arises, but people look at that.
Whoa.
You know, so, yeah. So that's a better acronym. But anyway, currently, this is where many additional technology projects are stored, that, that thing. And then orange are the capital projects funded through the Universal Internal Service Fund or U S F. Fun, once again, it's another great mechanism of cooperation between the town and the Board of Education. So, you know, the proposed motion here for tonight would be motion to approve the Board of Ed capital budget request for fiscal year 22, we're looking at the 27 also. Yeah, so 27, we have to modify that and authorize the superintendent to provide to the town manager for consideration. What's weird about this is, I have, it's got updated, but I don't see some of the updates on this particular page. So in any case, to go over the colorful matrix there and give you a couple of highlights from it, two remaining projects from the 2018 capital carryover authorized by the T C Town Council, are the T M S paving project, 259,310, and the district-wide I T school surveillance access control system balance, and that's about 17,000. So we're going to use that 17,000 that's left from that for the radio system and the security radios. Security radios are really great, they've been an excellent addition to our security and surveillance infrastructure. And they allow us to launch lockdowns and other things straight from, you know, our bodies, rather than having to run inside, hit a button, or do something on the phone. We can launch them from our radios, and so that's been highly effective. And it's much faster response time. So that 17 will be used for that. The two remaining bond projects are the T I S, and this is, I think, the green there, the T I S replacement ceiling. They're building wide projects, and the T M S replacement ceiling, tiles, basically. You know, when you look up like these, you see the white ceiling tiles. These projects may come under budget, and if they do, what's also in the pipeline is using it for T I S basement closet upgrades, kitchen grease trap interceptors, stage risers. So it can be used because of the nature of it for those things as well, and because the projects were done very efficiently, those other projects may be able to be wrapped into it, so they, they don't have a capital impact elsewhere. So that's, you know, two, that's a nod to the great management of Peter Staba and the town on these. So that, you know, we're able to take the 318 there for those two, and leftover funds could take, oh, take and handle those projects. Well, paving is generally a summer project. You see it on, you know, the timeline that it won't usually get done until the summer of that timeline. V C T tile projects, those projects are completed, and they're now off the capitalist. So you may have noticed in the previous, like, iterations, there were V C T tiles here and there. They are now complete. So for instance, the V C T project at the high school should be largely complete. There are items that were moved farther out. The reason is the pandemic meant less wear and tear. So because there was less wear and tear, the T H S boiler with water filtration system, they can get another year out of that, that was moved to 2023. The geothermal purge parts for T M S and T I S, those are Universal Internal Service Fund funded items. Once again, probably move those out to 2023 because of, you know, the, the lack of need in this time span. And then moving the library and main office carpet, how that could be moved out to 2024, because there was less, you know, last year there weren't kids running all over the carpet. So these are. So, um, these are able to be moved out a little farther and that's some other things, um. Some work was taken off because it was able to be done and utilize some of it, you remember the end of the year. Uh, we did some projects as well, so the TIS, um, front main entry area, um, TIS auditorium stage curtains, you might remember these. That saved the capital budget money because we're able to do that with some of those E O Y funds. The bus lot paving may get bonded as a part of a larger town project. So that's in there, but you may notice it getting wrapped into some other projects, which is typically what the town does, the trap resurfacing. You'll notice that's a pretty big chunk, there's the TMS one, the THS one. It's advisable to wrap that into the same timeline as the turf field, which is a little bit later, a conversation tonight, but it's being taken up by the town council and board of that. In a joint meeting that should be coming up sometime in October. So, um, so that would be, you know, a good time to maybe do the, you know, the resurfacing because it's about three hundred fifty thousand for the high school. You did that in twenty twenty-five. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, um, and then the one for the middle school might, you know, might be able to be pushed out a little bit. So anyway, you know, twenty twenty-five maybe high school, twenty twenty-three maybe middle school, it just depends on when that, you know, when this happens for the turf field, the high school. Want to roll it into about the same timeline, um, whether it's three or five, but there's two of those to do. You may want to consider, um, the TIS portables at some point, many people don't even realize they're there, but those may get on the radar fairly soon. They are between that new senior housing and, uh, you know, when I was principal of building, we fully utilized those. Because we had like a thousand kids and now they're used mainly for storage, um, for the district. It's good because we don't have a lot of storage in the district, but they still have to be outfitted, you know, and the, the rain and everything that we had recently. The waters rose and so these things seem to be maintained, they're mostly like wood, kind of as you'd imagine a quarter. But if you've never seen it, uh, Peter has kept those in great condition, but they may need something at some point soon. So new ads, some of the new ads, um, FFC reviewed this in, um, a prior meeting, I think it was earlier August. And, um, maybe eighteen. And, um, so I'm going to go over some of them now, replacing the THS loading dock, the O B system. The unit is severely rusted and they've welded and painted and tried to replace and, um. You know, this, this is deteriorated and it's a safety issue at this point and, um. You know, it'd be about five thousand to purchase and install something to make that better. That should be the. If you search T H S loading dock.
Oh, I see it.
You know, basically, yeah.
Hours on end.
That one, uh, the other one is, uh, T H S stage four, um, that's an ad for twenty twenty-seven, square footage about nineteen hundred. Approximately cost about twenty dollars to install this maple tongue and groove, but they're looking to make it stronger wood because. It's kind of sprint splintered in the past, that's been a problem, so they're looking to make it, you know, use a stronger wood. New tractor for the BGP, um, area due to the sidewalk area is now greatly increased. So the amount of sidewalks at the new school on a designation of the, you know, designated fifty fifty potentially asphalt, black top plate surface. It's a lot more than what they're used to with the tractor and other equipment that they had had. Probably is not going to be cleared unless we are able to effectively do that, um, because it's. Still a lot more space and it's probably going to be ours to do. So, um, that's why that's in there and, um. Generally, John Beer is very good, it's an American made track, so plug in John Beer. Anyway, um, it would be similar to what was purchased about, I don't know, four years ago. Um, and it costs twenty-three thousand dollars, anyway, moving on. Fifty-four hundred machines. Um, these clean the floor, if you've ever seen them, you know, in the buildings, they're usually going through and, you know. They make it possible to clean a building rapidly, you know, make it, make it, get through it in the, in the night or two nights. The units that we do have are becoming increasingly obsolete and the parts don't, you know, it's much harder to find them, especially now. So we spent close to thirty-five hundred dollars repairing these two things, um, both this, uh, THS. T I S the summer, it was like the three thousand five hundred just to repair them. So, um, you know, as they're getting antiquated and older, it would be good to, to look at, you know, the replacing them. The current T five model is, uh, I guess much, much better, it's much more efficient and, uh, that would make sense. And, you know, Pete never puts something on there that isn't really important to pay them attention to, so, um. So that's the, um, units are, you know, basically stripping floors and, um, cleaning them and so on. Uh, maintenance truck replacement, Pete's been driving the same Ford F- one fifty for a while, it's in pretty bad condition now. It's at that age where, you know, you're going to have transmission problems, they're going to be big ticket items. The truck, um, has well over, um, a hundred thousand, um, and it's, it's not doing well, so. Um, replacing his truck, you know, given all the work that he does and it would be a good idea. So, that's also made it on here, um, as eight you want. So, that's, uh, that's the big stuff, I mean, that's mostly the big stuff. Some of the rest of this is from before, even though it shifted around a little bit. And so if you have any questions, I can try to answer them or take them and, um.
Yeah, so let's open up to four members.
Uh, I had a couple of questions, um, what was with the articulating lift, which I think was on the agenda last, um, last year? Or not on the agenda, the capital budget plan, um, I noticed we had a bit of a discussion about that. Seeing if we could potentially share one with the town, is there any movement on that discussion? Or any feedback at all for the council on that item?
Well, um. To my knowledge, um, as limited as it is, there hasn't been. Yeah, I don't think that there's any problem with sharing anything, but I don't think this has moved forward.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I don't know the status, so maybe someone over the town is really hard to trip, you know, really make it this happen. Say like that's going, going anywhere right now.
I think that'd be an efficient thing to do to continue to push for that. The other thing, uh, I have no problem with the floors, I think that makes sense, I think a lot of the stuff on here. Um, I don't have an issue with, I think they're good investments, um, one question or concern I do have with the one-to-one. Although I, you know, I believe that especially post-pandemic, it's a necessary thing. Um, I do wonder if we might want to have a more in-depth discussion in FFC about how to, uh, to fund those devices. Um, I don't know, you know, the chances of it going through in the capital budget or, you know, given the lifespan of the devices, if this is necessarily the right place for it. Um, it's just a reservation that I have. Uh, hopefully, we can discuss more, um, in the coming months. That's all for now, so.
Um, if we were to, uh, fund for the. For the, uh, the field, would that be in fiscal year twenty-five, so we'd be doing that at the same time as the track?
That's the goal, I mean, I think that's the mindset, just you're going to do this thing, do it all at once.
Okay, okay. I was gonna say, because I mean, it seemed like it'd be efficient to do it that way, that was my question.
I guess my question is on the prioritization, specifically in the areas that became an opportunity to arise. Looking at that, I see a whole lot that you've labeled district priority high. And yet you put them over here in a fund that may or may not get funded, that really doesn't have a meat big. How do you fit in both?
Well, I mean, I think generally, um, I think there's an educational, you know, feeling of an educational. You know, imperativeness to it, but when you're, um, you know, when your ceiling is going to collapse in on you. Science upgrade is not as important as this. And then sort of, that's sort of how this has played out largely over the span of time with the capital. If the board of the town has some additional funding or opportunities, they can pick up one off the wall list, you know. But, um, I guess the design of that, the reasoning was that, you know, these things are not unimportant. But they, they aren't going to cause us to have to shut the school down or, you know.
So if I look at, if I look at the high priorities, if I'm understanding what you're saying, then, and I'm just pulling two of these, just. You know, no particular, uh, where I look up and I see THS roof replacement, high priority. And I look down here and say, you know, for you, what you said, the science lab upgrades, I probably, that's not the same high.
Yeah, well, I think there's, um, highs that will shut you down or high that would, you know, keep you up with education. You know, and so, as if I had to, you know, when you're using a, a high school lab, um. You know, if your labs have been upgraded, you're able to do many more experiments and many more stem or steam activities, things like that, you know. And I think it doesn't, this kind of thing doesn't happen in a year or two years. What happens is over five years or ten years, your labs get greatly outdated. And then they are important, you know, there, many of them have not been updated for a long, long time, but. Um, you know, those are when juxtaposed with something like the pavement in front of a school that could cause liability problems. They're always going to win, the, the capital physical projects will always win, so those are there, many of them are medium. Um, but ones that are high generally are high because they're looking at trying to make the, the lab steam or stem, you know, compatible. And, uh, they can do more things with them when they are.
But we are, so I understand what you're saying and thank you for that explanation, uh, but we're tracking to make sure that if. Any of these upgrades escalate to where they are, they do become education dollars. And they're getting bumped up out of that, we could take them out of that and put them up and we may, we just haven't had the courage to do that because we're, we don't want to.
So, um, yeah, we'll try to achieve them in many ways, uh, grants may come up and that means that we would get capital funds for grants and take them out of the list. You know, infrastructure grant, and maybe there used to be things that you thought would pop up. That may not pop up because there's a lot of funds right now dedicated to the pandemic that are going to drain the, during the. Fund or whatever and, you know, so, um, you may see those creep up into the, into the top because, you know. There may, the funding that we used to get for these things may not happen and so that may be more of these. Um, with respect to the one-to-one, we call it the education technology initiative now, um. You know, the, the replacement cycle was articulated in the plan when we put out the. The plan for the educational technology initiative, I don't know, like, I don't know, probably more than a year ago. And in that plan, it talked about replacement cycle, that replacement cycle is reflected in this plan. Because the replacement cycle started in twenty twenty-three, you know, that's when you need to start cycling these nets, um, oops. Um, that's when you need to start, uh, you need to start cycling the units, so that can be accomplished through. Things like the educational, uh, E R F, because E R F has a capital component. But it also makes sense that if you put it in from, you know, here too in a way, because it does have, you know, so the big price tag and it's a, you know, can be. So, that's why it's there, it can be published through, you know, the E R F, but we also have to, you know, keep in mind that the E R F. We can't return to that well too many times and, um. You know, one maintenance of effort issue with special ed would, would be hundreds of thousands. And E R F also could cover special ed, so it's not a bad idea to have about, you know, something in the E R F that could cover the ma- major rainy day. Because a rainy day for a school district could, could be a maintenance of effort change and that's a big rainy day. That's like, uh, you know, more than the hyperbolic level one hurricane that we almost had a month ago. This would be an actual hurricane of sorts, because that can be a hundred thousand dollar, you know, so. It's not a bad idea to, to not to be careful about that, but E R F is another methodology. Uh, because if you can't use. So, my, you know, my guess is that the town will not be excited about that part of it. Um, and that we may have to think about the alternative funding paradigm of maybe the era. But that's.
Let's go ahead and move on to Rainy. Um, I was just wondering on the, the truck, what is the year of the truck that we have now versus, like, how long is that lasting for? For thirty-five thousand dollars, I'm just curious. And then secondly, I, you know, I, I think I mentioned this before, this articulating lift. Jacob mentioned it as well, you know, we, we've had conversations about the, the sharing of that and how can we, you know, get that. You know, working better, uh, rather than spending eighty thousand dollars to. Um, and then, you know, we, we do have a lot of money in the E R F and I understand what you're saying, but to the degree, and again, this is until twenty twenty-three, so I guess it's not. You know, maybe critical to make a decision on it, but for whatever this is, I don't know. You know, twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever, um, you know, maybe you say for that year, you're going to take it out of the E R F. We don't have some, you know, catastrophic situation happen, so, I don't know, that's it. Yeah, I'd be interested in that information too about the car, because I had a car that just died at two hundred thirty-three thousand.
Remember, this thing is. Like it's. Beat up by a lot of heavy work, you know, heavy stuff, but. I'd love my pilot to two hundred, but these are different kind of things.
It just seems like, you know, you're kind of around the districts, you're not really maybe driving huge normal miles, but there you are, I really don't know.
Just, it'd be, it gets beat up, so a hundred thousand on a truck like that is.
Right, yeah, when you're a work truck, like, you're, you're beating it up.
It's a twenty-twelve. Wow, ten years old.
Thirty-five Ks, yes.
Yeah.
Did you say, so we're not going to spring for the, uh, Ford F- one fifty Lightning?
You're all set, okay, go ahead, Griffin. I will just say, as you know, that Mrs. Stoddard's truck has crank roll down windows.
It's retro.
Yes.
By the way, that's how windows used to be.
So, we obviously, we, we did look at this at FFC, so I'm, I was comfortable with all of the new items and, um, you know. We talked about the articulating list as well, so I would also like to see if we can kind of revisit that with the town. I do have a little bit of the problem with the one-to-one. And I think what's kind of throwing me off is the wording in here that says recurring. Um, capital budget items should not be recurring items. And I think that's where the town council will block at this. Because, and a, a device, I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly, these capital budget items are supposed to have a useful life also of eight years or more. And we know that none of these devices are going to have a useful life of eight years. So my proposal would be to take all of that out before we submit that to the town. And revisit it at a later date since, as Rainy said, we do have the E R F, which would. At least cover us for twenty twenty-three while we can then see about either putting this in our operating budget. Or continuing to use E R F funds, but to kind of continue that conversation, but personally, I think we should remove that. Before we send it to the, um, the town council.
Uh, no, that makes sense, I mean, especially if it does say reoccur and then we're already kind of behind the eight ball on that. So, you know, we definitely want to ensure that whatever we do provide to them, it is, you know, buttoned up, so that's, you know, a good thought, you know. Um, let's go to, um, four.
Not going to nitpick. The truck and the tractor like I was before, no, it's got crank windows, I'm okay with that, I would agree. Have a crank some, um, I would agree. I would agree with Griffin on the one to one. I don't think that's gonna fly. Uh, we do have the E R F, there's a decent amount of money in there and that, from looking at. Last year's budget, I think, will probably have more in there. Um, so I would love, I know it's capital, but I'd love to see some of these. At the tis, science lab and classroom tech upgrades, either come out of there or go on here.
I will second that. I think that it's important to keep this um. Education going. I think it is important, so if we can. You know, put money toward those classroom upgrades. I mean, it only helps our educational system by having our students, whether they're doing more science projects or. Whatever, what have you. I mean, some of our labs are definitely pretty old. Be kind. So I would definitely, I would love to see some of those, like, like Tony was saying, I mean, they are high for a reason. So, I mean, how long do we just sit there looking at them as a high? On our list and not look to actually add them up and if we can maybe. Share that articulating left and, you know, try to rearrange things so it makes more sense. I think that we would be better off.
So the the way that ultimately this motion would probably go when, or if you decide to do it. Hopefully more in the land, because it was my special session, which is no biggie. So I would say your motion would be, you know, approving it with the removal of, say, one to one and the addition of. So whatever of the well you feel particularly strongly about, you probably wanna articulate either. All of the lab woes or.
I think we gotta start knocking them something off. I mean, we have. I mean, the T I, I gotta be honest with you, the T I S science labs, I mean, the schools are pretty rough shape, but, you know, so are the middle schools, I mean.
So if you specify the one or two.
You gotta pick something out to start.
Well, if you take out the one to one in twenty twenty three, you got a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred. Same in the twenty twenty four, so if you pick off a couple of things and move those into that spot.
And just thinking the, just also where you're gonna pick that up will be either E R F or your operating.
Well, probably, hopefully, E R F, I mean, we, again, we do have a good balance, and we would be adding to it. Based on what we had left over last year, so while I understand your concern around, you know, if there's some catastrophic event, but. You know, I mean, we can't always just plan everything around a catastrophic event that may never happen, I don't think. So, and versus, we know there are some things that are happening, I mean.
And the other question I had too, though, is for the T I S science labs, I mean, we took a bunch of that area and turned it into a lead section.
Yeah, but they they still have some that are not.
Yeah, they have like that little hallway.
There's enough, but remember, like, that building, when we were fully utilizing it, had a thousand, when I came in, there was a thousand children. That's not the same. So there are some areas of that that can be retrofitted, you know, made into a modern one that will not jeopardize the.
Yeah, I think it would be better if we wait on the closing of this and actually see an updated chart with some movements so that it would.
No problem. So to do that, though, you will have to have a special session.
What was the day we have to have an invite?
So, um, the date has to be October seventh.
Seven, we had to have it into the by the seven.
Right, so our next board of ed meeting is the thirteenth of October.
But that's okay, we're gonna need to anyway, so I think that.
So, um, we can.
Can I just ask a question as to what the process is? Like, we present, we give this to the town, or you give this to the town, and then?
The council decides, the town staff and council decides which of these things they will fund.
Oh, they pick and choose, they wouldn't give just.
They'll decide what they feel like they can bond for, through the bonds or not. It's collaborative, but not everything that we ask for.
Is it such that they give an amount, or do they say, do they actually, and then we can allocate that amount to the line items we feel are important, or do they actually pick the line?
They fund, they will wrap these into bonds as they see fit, and then wrap that into the overall budget as they see fit.
Okay.
So just to, you know, throw it out there to you, I mean, we have the T H S, which is obviously a much newer building than the T I S and the T M S that used to be the old high school. So, you know, the fat logic is, you know, perhaps we should, you know, prioritize that, you know, the T I S science labs, the T M S, you know, just, because. Being that T H S is so much of a newer building, I would like to see those kind of on top. If that would make sense, you know.
T I S, T I S W O A is fucked up.
Yeah, I would say T I S or T M S, what they know, depending on, I don't know, she's not a calculator, she's.
To be more exact, you want them to put into this the twenty two to twenty seven by their request.
Yeah, more more to add into the actual, the ninety three.
The ninety three, that's what I was.
Thirty four.
The ninety three thousand for the.
And the one oh seven. Yeah, the ninety three is T M S. And then you have thirty four for T I S, last second grade, one oh seven for T I S classroom. I'm trying to use my paper as my.
And like a ninety three and a thirty four could replace the uh one to one in twenty twenty three, right? Even less.
We have ninety three, one oh seven, and thirty four. I feel like I'm missing something, because the sign, oh, this is.
It's two thirty four.
So, Lily asked a question, why why aren't we wanting to include the one to one? I understand that it's recurring, but I mean, at a certain point, everything's recurring, you know.
Because if it's an eight year for the town of talent, uh, not town of talent, but for the capital budget, and it has to be useful within that timeframe that.
Oh, I see.
So, you know, it doesn't really necessarily fall under that, so I'd much rather see those. Go, you know what I'm saying, like, take that as a, we have that funding in E R F. And then, like I said, I think it's important to make sure that our buildings are. Able for our children to actually learn and whether it's, you know, the ball in the sand, or, you know, they mix some chemicals. The science lab should be. Put together. Well, they used to do a chemistry in the middle school, and then they got bumped for our boys two years, but that's a whole other conversation.
Yeah, no, I didn't realize they had a three year lifespan to it.
Yeah.
So.
So, just, you know, in the whole conversation about the priorities, and I understand what you're saying about the newer buildings versus the older ones. Um, but are we also looking at how any of these upgrades relate to, you know, our curriculum initiatives or things like that?
I was just thinking for STEM, I mean, STEM is such a huge aspect, and like I said, I mean, I've been in that, those science wings and.
Well, then it is, that completely makes sense, but if our next, and I'm again, not entirely certain how it is, but. If our next initiative is the engineering cap, for example, then does this server now become important? Does the fact that we're still calling this cab become important? If our next one is more in the arts area or the music areas, then is that more important? You know, are we using? Our our vision for the future, are we using that to help prioritize?
That was a good question for him, because he's the one to put high, medium.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the, that would be the site, T H S science lab. That would be the T H S, I know, classroom tech. Server, I guess, but mostly it would be those science room upgrades. The next thing that we should do here is engineer. So that would be a really good place, science and engineering labs, so upgrade.
Well, I guess, my question, and I know you had your hand.
Oh, no, sorry.
I know, I see it to piggyback.
I was trying to get a double hand.
But uh, piggybacking off what Tony said, do we have to label them? Like, can't we just say T H S upgrade? Do we keep it a little bit vague so that when the funding does come in, say, in twenty twenty four, we can apply that upgrade to whatever is relevant?
You could. The council may wanna know. With specificity, you know, I want to do, is they they have to decide whether to allocate that or something else.
They're gonna say, what is exactly in that upgrade?
They don't appreciate that.
You know, you kind of put this on like an Amazon wish list, and you're like. You know, here are things to plug off.
I'm just trying to think of a workaround, that's all.
I was gonna say, I'd love to vote on this tonight and not have a special session on it. I would vote yes without.
I want to break it to you, we're gonna have a special session.
Well, I'm just making a suggestion. Then I would vote yes on it without the one to one. I don't think that'll fly. Uh, I'm okay with all the new ads. Uh, we'll see what they say. I think there needs to be more discussion around the when opportunity arises, with some committee work, um, where, what we would wanna do with that. Um. You know, because I don't wanna say selfishly, but I, you know, T H S to me looks beautiful, Birch Grove looks beautiful, tis, I I want them to have those upgrades, but that's just, you know, me kind of on the outside. Looking in, you know, I'm not physically in the classroom, you know, using the equipment they have. So long story short, I would vote to pass it on to the council and then revisit some of this other stuff from the E R F, by the way.
And I have to respectfully disagree. Um, and I think it's important that what we present to the council is very concise and directed. And it looks like if we were talking one or two things, you know, like, we just wanna pull these off, I got it, I think that's easy to do. But now that we're starting to talk about possibly reprioritizing the when opportunities arise, moving some of them up into the the funded and what years. I think that's a whole lot of things happening here to just not blindly, but to just approve without taking one more quick look at.
Anyone else? Yeah, no, I would agree with Tony. I think that we just need something else in front of us again to have that conversation. Could be a good conversation, um, so I think that that would be important to do. And I think what Dr. Will looked through these and reformulate, I guess you could say. Or she to say this is what we're gonna provide to council.
Sorry, just to be clear, so we're taking out the one to one. Or he's gonna re-present it without the one to one, and we're talking about just the six high items on the on the whoa.
He's.
What you were saying, because what I what I have here, although I do need clarification on on the W O A is. Want this re-presented without the one to ones, which I can take out, um, then the W O As, you wanted it centralized around. That's the part that I just wanna make sure I get it.
Well, I think what Tony was saying, I think that's important too, is, you know, what is gonna help us move our district forward? I mean, I do think some is highly in, you know, the hot thing right now, and I think that that's what it means, you know, having our. The tracker. Help me out here. The pathways, so say like any of this like goes with the pathways, I'm thinking like up and.
Fast ones would be literally any science lab upgrade, and you know, any of those are going to be, I think it's engineering, it's the next.
It's a big thing, so that's why I was thinking, if we can.
So I can add engineering.
Add those and that one would be a better situation.
Okay, well, are we also talking about taking off the articulating list, or are we not?
Um, that one, I think, so we should discuss it. I think we should, um, discuss that. For her, discover, we'll send send an email or, you know.
The other way to do the, leave it on there, and then it'll inevitably be discussed.
Last year, and now we're discussing it again.
Right, but to the degree that we could again move something else from. In that spot, you know, and it would be nice. If we could do that, you know, and ma- and again, to Ashley's point, sort of, you know, upgrade the schools a little bit, better for the kids, better education, more timely, and that type of thing.
And we did also talk about F F C. I think last year this kind of got buried during COVID after the the date went by, when we submitted it last year. So we have it on our radar for the future, that we're gonna kind of revisit it and see what the council said about it. You know, what did they come back and say, you know, absolutely not, or, yeah, you know, so just to find out, you know, kind of where they stood on it, so we will be discussing that in the next couple of months. Once they've had time to review it, and then we'll talk about it in committee and then um, send it back to board as well.
That's perfect, so just know that there is gonna be another meeting, special meeting, you know.
In addition to the joint meeting or?
Addition.
Okay.
So we can approve this to put it to town council. We'll get that. Dr. Willett loves those doodles.
Another one's coming right at you, enjoy. Never scroll right, scroll left.
So let's move on to the COVID relief fund and, um, I'm sure you must have something to figure on.
Yes, so, um. So, um. Right now, you know, as you know, the um, the town council and the board of that are going to meet. And to do the poll that we talked about is, we're gonna set the date for that. Uh, to discuss the educational, um, the C R F request and the circle. Um, the C R F request will ultimately be, you know, for the part of this that it is related to the budget. It will be a discussion generally about what we think, you know, the rolled over funds may be used for for the coming year. It is, um, as you recall, the end of last year, um, the last action of the board was to do a fifty fifty split. Of the money to go to the C R F, if it still existed, or on hand to E R F. So those were the two directions in which the budget money would go. And the C R F is written in such a way that if it's not used, it would go back to the E R F so long as it wasn't more than one percent. So theoretically, nothing's lost, and if it is more than one percent, it goes back to the town. I think that the, you know, the the thing that, you know, potentially come up with respect to that conversation is, you know, what exactly, um. Was that comprised of, as you got towards the end, which is gonna be a natural, you know, natural part of the process that we discuss. Also, there were a series of questions the council was formalizing to ask about the previous expenditure, whether they still want to know that or not. I don't think I've received an official question other than some of the things that they asked me when I went to the meeting, which I answered, and I think Christine was there and. And you were there, thank you for that. And so we did answer some of the questions, and maybe that was enough. Maybe they're gonna ask some more, I don't know what's coming, but we'll see. Having said that, uh, I was working on something, you know, in the middle of all the other stuff going on. Just to give you a general idea, I didn't get a chance to to put that up yet, but I did make a reference to this earlier in the meeting. That, uh, if you look at the, um, the end of the year was complicated because we. Really saved in some areas, and then some other areas got overspent. For for the purpose of doing what we were doing with our end of year funds. So the big three categories in which, um, we recovered funds for salaries and substitute. Transportation and specialized tuition. And again, what I wanna point out about these as a really important part of the conversation. Is that the previous year's COVID impact naturally had these consequences, which were good consequences in some ways. For instance, we weren't using the buses, you know, their buses were not utilized at certain intervals last year, so the bus savings was 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 pretty big. Similarly, we did not fully staff our schools, um, because there weren't people working, and there was differentials in time between leaving and retirement. Therefore, that is another huge chunk. And the tuitions also, as I said in the beginning of the meeting. Also a very big chunk, because the the tuition programs weren't doing the things they would normally do, so we had, we didn't get tuition returns, we had transportation money returned. And we did not expend the salaries. That will not be the case this coming year. If anything, those will be quite, quite expensive. So having the, having money in the COVID relief fund would be a good idea for two reasons. One. As far as I can tell, this year, it's much more labor intensive, you know, because everybody's back plus. So we're all back plus, we need to manage not only the entire population that is there. But another population that may intermittently be there, not be there, be there, not be there, that implication is, but to be an ongoing impact. You know, if anything, it's transportation plus, because we may have to run certain buses with fewer numbers of kids on them. Sports, for instance, in order to maintain a certain, you know, kind of, um, six inch spacing, that kind of thing. And we're fully running them, so all sports are fully active, all these things are happening. So the thing about this year is, it's everything plus the pandemic. Last year was the pandemic and we were, you know, making all the adjustments to education as a result. And, um, any add-on was usually, you know, part of that whole nightmare remote. This year, all the add-ons are in addition to what we're doing. Anything transportation, it's not like we're running fewer, we're gonna maybe run more. So it doesn't hurt to have a place to go. And the board in its, you know, wisdom, you know, asks for that potential role of those two chunks going to fifty fifty those areas. So that money could be used for in this year, my hope for staff. Um, if we could utilize it for staff in variety of ways, we may be able to do more with some of the things you were asking about. And at the end of this year, should the CRF be continued, at the end of the year, um, if we did not expend it, it rolls back to the town. So there's really no reason for that safety net not to exist, the town loses nothing. Uh, that money will sit there and either be utilized for the things that, you know, are needed to make that educational experience better for children. You know, under this global pandemic, it's cost six hundred some thousand lives now, or it rolls back to the town. So there's really no loss with respect to this. So it makes sense, it also makes sense that we would have a balance like this for, for these reasons. And these were largely the reasons, um, you know, that, that impact was, was what it was, um, what we had at the end, you know, as a result of it. So. You know, we also did a lot of things in this district that people were willing to take on with, you know, so the athletic, um, director did do some of the role of the assistant principal for a large part of the year. You know, I, I did things without hiring other staff to do them, you know. So there was things, things that people picked up across the whole board, um, that, you know, that were done, did not require, even though it did not cost the district more. So this, this was done through blood, sweat and tears. Whatever was left over at the end was really through those efforts or some aspect of things that we couldn't really control, that we suffered through. So the, the money that's yielded, it makes sense to have it be available for what might be part of this new pandemic experience. The, this is like pandemic two point O, it does not resemble one hundred percent its earlier version where everybody was remote. It resembles a new, almost, you know, more intensive thing. Because it, it's, it's like keeping everybody in school requires, you know, constant attention and maybe additional use of resources versus last year being able to recover something because we. And this is only part of the items, the other item is a general COVID update.
Let's talk about the, um, this first and then we'll go from there.
I do have a question, um. How much time has staff put into contract tracing and has anything been put off because they've had to do that?
Well. So some school districts have shut their schools, because what happens is you, um.
Are you gonna talk about heat burn?
I'm not speaking of any district in particular. Sorry. Because I'm not planning as a superintendent, not doing any better than anyone else, it's just everybody has a different experience, it's very different. But I'm explaining for our district, what happens for us is that, um, the people that are working for you, and there's just a few of us and I'm involved myself. We will get this information at all kinds of odd hours and we're willing to engage at those odd hours so that we can get these individuals notified. If you cannot notify the group of people prior to the beginning of the next day of school, you have to shut the school down until you can get everybody notified or at least send all these, or at least send all the classrooms home. Cause you have to pass the net wide and then the next day figure out who can stay and can't. So if we want to keep the schools open, we have to have all hands on deck to do that. So the contact tracing involves me, involves the director of nursing, and it has to involve me because I have the authority to do certain things. And the director of nursing has the, you know, all the knowledge and all of that. And so we work really close in collaboration over these items and then there's, nurses obviously do an amazing job. And then the rest of the educators, pairs, teachers and everyone else picks up all the weight of all the adjustments, right? But, um. You know, the way we do it, we'd, we're able to do this without sending entire classrooms home or shutting down schools. So we have hired people that have left. You know, we brought on a nurse who was like too much, another nurse brought up, but too much. So any effort to hand this off like in another way has resulted in people going, this is not worth it, I don't wanna be up at midnight or up at one doing this and that, and also do another gig. So we haven't really found any, you know, consistent thing that we can employ. Unless we're willing to give up the idea that we should just shut the school down or empty the whole classroom. If we're willing to accept that as a concept, then you can do it differently. But those of us who have been doing this, that hanging on like, we will be darned if that happens. You know, we're trying to not have that ever be the case here. So, and we have been successful with that and we've been lucky. So. So we haven't hired a bunch of contact tracing people. We could hire a team of people to do it, but have to train that team. And, um, there's a bunch of things, you know, and once, when we tried to do that, we've trained them and they leave. So we've been burned a little bit by that experience now twice and it's like. You know, we're just gonna ride this thing out and we're gonna ride it out the way we're doing it right now and it's not effective, but it does take a toll on the people that are working for you. And it does save you money, because we're not hiring people outside to do that.
Have there been, and the second part of the question was, you know, have we had to put off anything? Have we had to put off anything, any initiatives or tasks because?
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, but not, not permanently, um, but, um. Gets in the way, you know, and the pandemic gets in the way, shutting down schools, we get in the way, you know, so. It's not like anything is taking a permanent, um, thing, but for instance. You know, um. Uh, there's a specialized project that I'm working on that we're just not able to move forward in September. We'll probably would get that forward in October and about, um. You know, there's, uh, SCL projects that we are stepping up and taking out the step aside reasons, but it's still happening. So we may have had to give up our, our SCL trainings for, um, you know, September. But all three of the trainings for all staffs are still gonna be, um, happening, they're just starting a little later, you know, so. Um, we're not dropping anything, you know, off the side of the boat, but we're definitely adjusting, you know. The thing about this pandemic is, looking forward, you know, presumably in October, the, we're close to it. The, the information coming from Pfizer suggests that the, you know, that the eleven to five year olds, five or eleven, five to eleven will become, um, eligible. That would be a game changer, you know, in a number of ways, if we were, you know, the people continue to get vaccinated and if I, to the ones get vaccinated, that changes the impact that it's gonna have.
So I don't know if you want me to ask these serious questions now, wait till the more appropriate COVID.
Well, I think, yeah, we're gonna talk about the CRF first and then, you know, let him get his update with COVID and then get up there, because that just seems to be the topic getting biggest. Griffin, you had your hand.
Thank you. Um, so just regarding the CRF, obviously, I'm just gonna perhaps give my committee update right now or. Um, we did talk about that a lot as well, um, and we also talked about doing, um, kind of, what I, I guess I'll refer to again now is my one page summary, so to kind of bring to the joint meeting with, uh, to the town council. So basically, um, what we had suggested was, you know, let's list out all of the grants. Yes or two, three, the CARES Act, like what funds have we received, what have we used them for? And then also, so that they know that we've used those for legit, you know, COVID expenses and I know some of those are used for counselors and social workers and all that. And then, um, taught, uh, just, just to kind of basically say to the town council, this is why we think we need the extension of the COVID relief fund. We thought it would just kind of be helpful to go into the joint, they've prepared with, you know, some numbers so that this way we can show the council exactly kind of where we're coming from. And, you know, kind of what Walt was just saying as far as, and this is why we think we need that money too, because we're, you know, like you were saying, we don't have, we're not gonna have bus savings anymore. And also actually touch upon a little bit of, of that, what, what Walt was saying as far as, um. You know, we had, yeah, we, we might've had some money in leftover salaries and transportation, but that's not gonna happen anymore. So I just kinda wanted to let you guys know that that's something we talked about, so I will, you know, go coordinate with Walt with that again and come up with something to make sure that we have something to, uh, actually show them in the joint meeting.
I don't believe it's gonna be one pager, but.
I did, the budget one was one page.
That the town will, um, be asking us questions ahead of that too.
And I think it's important that I think once again, when we have the information, even like that curfew, they're just getting it all together. And having so all the board members can get the information, know what's happening, and then we can ask our questions as well. But, you know, I know in terms of like the funds, like having those savings, having that touch upon, I mean, I think it's the whole picture. And I think that that needs to be conveyed that, you know, yes, we do in fact need that again for this year. I think that would be important. So are you taking on, on FFC?
Uh, we, I'm assuming the joint meeting will be before the next FFC?
Yes, probably. And so the thing about it is too, that the town has, um, uh, in the wisdom of the FFC and Christine, we did have this conversation. There are things that I'll be putting together, I anticipate the town will be asking whatever it wants to ask. And this is all going to be pretty rapidly happening in the next few weeks. So depending on when we have this meeting, which could be October fifth, depending on if they do a poll says, it could be very, very fast. And so what I would probably be doing is, as we pull the information together and I, I answer questions, I post it to the dashboard in anticipation of this meeting that, and you're all a part of. Right? So there are some things here that, that we're talking about tonight that are the biggest chunks of the why. But what remains to really be put together, which I have to work on and I'm trying to do that is, what potentially this year could be the biggest financial impacts that we would need the CRF for? And so we will talk about what the grants are already being used for, cause it's all allocated pretty much already to these things. And what the other things would be that might be part of the landscape of this year. And so that's what I'll be doing and I think maybe the dashboard is a good place, FFC's minutes have a lot of great stuff in it. And the dashboard, cause you don't, your timeline is potentially not that far out to protect over there. Yeah, so I'll try to get that up there, so you're very near to town council board event conversation, it's open to the public and everything will be talked about in.
Yeah, I do like the idea because like I said, for all of us to go to a joint meeting to know, uh, you know, here's all the information, you know, so we actually have numbers and dates, whatever that you can provide would be the best situation. So as long as you guys are, it seems like everyone's good. Okay, so on a to-do list. So do you wanna go into your, uh, COVID update portion?
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, there's a lot of data that we could go into, I'm trying to, there's just so much that I'm trying to figure out what, you know, what is, what to tell you that isn't going on and on and on. So the biggest difference between what I've communicated to you in the past and what I would communicate to you right now is that, um, that the executive order thirteen D and now updated through thirteen G basically stipulates that all staff must have one of two choices executed by twenty seventh. That's either going to be, they provide their vaccination, uh, proof of vaccination, or they're proof that they have the first one and are in process of getting a second one. Or they have to say that they agreed to succumb to weekly testing. Um, the district will not be paying for the testing, um, for, um, with, there's a certain exception that if you can show that you're medically vulnerable and there's no other way you can get the vaccine, we'll work to find alternatives. Otherwise, people have to find the testing on their own, the state of Connecticut where it's offered. Um, they must do it seventy two hours from the time of submission and, um, it must happen every week. So that will be required of all staff, we're not showing vaccinations, that was by, uh, the midnight on every Friday. So for us to speak to what you were saying, um, Mr. Ritten, you should, uh, the, uh, there's more now. Cause we have to make sure we're tracking who is and was not vaccinated and every week checking every single record of every single person is gonna be submitting testing information, did they do it, did they not do it, who do we follow up with? And if people do not do it, um, they will be put on a very brief unpaid leave and then terminated. And so we're hoping that that's not the case, but hoping people don't refuse to do that. Uh, if they do, thirteen D and G do not make it unclear about what has to happen at that point. That, at that point, they are no longer employed because they're in violation of the executive orders. So. We are now in the countdown to the twenty seventh. There are rumors that something might be updated, I haven't seen anything updated, I don't know. Um, so we have to operate off of what we have in front of us and that's. So, um, that puts my office in, you know, so we have to track and then ultimately we have to have. You have to go through a process, you know, communicate, communicate information to them, give them an option to, you know, once again, do this and comply. Uh, and if they do not, you have to follow through all the appropriate process for, and that relationship.
Can I just, out of curiosity, what would be the percentage of teachers that would be doing this weekly?
And remember that this is everyone. Not just teachers.
So just everyone.
So it's, this, this pertains to all employees, including our secretaries or custodians or teachers, so everybody.
Anyone that has to deal with this, well, what are our percentage?
Of people that may not do this, it's difficult for me to say until the twenty seventh, I would say not many.
So it's not like we're looking at a huge percentage of?
No, I mean, there are people that still need to respond and I'm urging them to do so because we want, it's for their best interest and ours that we're able to plan. I would say that the true number is anywhere between three and thirty. Depending on what people decide to. You know.
And we're talking about deciding whether to go undergo weekly testing or get vaccinated.
Well, technically, yeah, they are, they're truly making a decision. Right, they're either telling me, here's my vaccine information, or there's, it in the other date. Or I am going to do weekly testing. And there's a third choice there obviously, which is to say that they, you know, they can not do either, but that will mean that they are not in compliance with executive order thirteen G, which is the law. And they then will not longer be able to be employed as a source.
Do we anticipate any?
Well, you know, these are really hard questions, cause we're not at the twenty seventh. I would say that, I would say that it would be foolish of me to say it's not a possibility.
Sorry, I'm curious.
No, no, there's no, no need to, uh, yes. I think some people may not comply.
But if you're talking three to thirty, I mean, we can be down to three.
Right, because the. The other thing about compliance.
Or percentage.
People.
No, three, three, three.
But then when you said percentage of.
No, like, you know. Our workforce is from almost four hundred and twenty seven, right? But what you, what we, here's the other piece of it is, there's immediate compliance and then there's the week to week. So if you don't get your testing in, I have to say, you know, hi, it's a testing, but then the second time I can't do that. It's gonna be.
So you have a protocol in place that you have to.
Yeah, and they're making it pretty, you know, that doesn't go for long, if you, and again, they, and if any inconclusive tests is looked at as a negative. So those who wanna do weekly testing, this is logistical. Heavy lifting, because we have to make sure we get all the results, track down everybody who didn't, find out why, take appropriate action. Any inconclusives cannot work in, in the school until, uh, they get their negative. That means that our staff, although, you know, like if you're in, you're out, who's here, who's not. Luckily, the vaccinated group is much, much bigger than the testing group, but the testing group is big enough to be, you know.
So you have the twenties until the twenty seventh to figure out.
Yeah, and it also includes substitutes, you know, you cannot sell if you don't, um, do one or the other. Nobody after the twenty seventh who is unvaccinated can be hired or can't sell. So after the twenty seventh. So after the twenty-seventh, you know, you can't, they have to be vaccinated to work.
So they don't have the choice to do the testing.
The twenty-seventh is the last point in time that somebody can do that. And then after that, according to executive orders now. Remember that, uh, Governor Lamont's, uh, executive powers theoretically and, um, yeah, emergency powers rather end on the thirtieth, but you know, this will likely be the extent. But if it were to end on the thirtieth, technically so does all that. And so, you know, it's been resilient hours gathering all this information. I'm gonna sign everything and then, you know, we didn't really need to do that, but, um, so we'll see, you know, I've never wanted and not wanted something at the same time, you know? God, if you did all that work and it ended, then everybody's back, you know, you know, but, oh. So it's basically probably, it's gonna very likely be extended and all of this continues into at least the near future.
I know Tony had his hand up. But you had enough for him.
Okay.
I'm watching.
So I was curious with the, uh, I've seen some emails come out recently with some, some contacts and some, um, you know, but, um, and I'm wondering how those numbers are looking in response to kind of what you envisioned when you put out the plan. I know when you put it out, you briefed the board and the public. The, the radius had changed, the number of people that were going to be affected. And when you got the call, the number of kids that were gonna be sent home, uh, changed. So how, what, how is what we're seeing now fitting in relation to what you were anticipating?
So that, that is low. I mean, it's, I take people off the list now. So, you know, that's the irony is that it actually is, um, it's not going to feel less impactful because I get it, it's impactful. But from a number standpoint, what's happening now is I get the list and then I compare it to the vax list. And people come off. So the people in the sixth, you know, who are old enough through the twelfth grade, I've removed quite a few kids that would have been in that three or six foot radius that never made it to the quarantine number that you see when I put out there. And sometimes even the one that's put out there, people then say, oh, we just forgot to give you our card, you know, or the nurse's tracking system, or CTWIS hadn't updated it yet. So a lot of it is, there goes out the list, you know, and then comes back the, oh, no, 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 here's the card, or always in this, or the state didn't do that, or you know, and so then other ones get taken off. So it never ends. It's like you do one and then the ones that come off and things are going on. But, um, it is less impactful because not everyone who is in that radius is just getting quarantined. And as the vaccinations become more ubiquitous, even it'll become less and less of that impact. So I see a very different possibility for us, you know, in the third quarter of the year. But, um, you know, we were gonna struggle through all of this and all of these, these new logistical pieces and total. So we, we are seeing it, um, you know, not as effective as men. That's good.
Uh, let's go to Jacob.
Yeah. I have a question, follow-up for Tony, but I'll start with the discussion about the staff members. Um, you mentioned that there is a significant number that you feel, um, will choose the testing route. You don't know exactly how many that is, but do you have a fuzzy guess, a three to thirty guess?
Oh, I'm gonna say the vast majority. I would say, you know, eighty percent plus, if not ninety percent.
Okay. This still could be between.
I would say that, yeah, I was looking at the ninety percent zone that I think people are going to be doing the vaccination. Again, until the twenty-seventh occurs, it really there's, you know, people who may get the first one and never get the, you know, and if you don't get the second one, you're considered to knock out. You have to do the weekly test. So some of this I won't know until all of the dust settles. I would be surprised if ninety percent wasn't the number of our staff.
Yeah.
But then that's still forty plus.
Yeah.
Their weekly testing, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you consider that, that's, you know, we've gotta track that, so that I can make sure they're in, make sure if they haven't, you know, it's, it's enough. But, um, but that's what I would guess.
Unlike with the students, I'm assuming a lot of that probably falls directly on your shoulders. Is that?
Yeah, it's gonna fall on me and HR, you know, and, and my secretary, you know? So when you see her, give her a really big smile. She's great. And Suzanne Waters is great. Christina's great. The whole office is great. They're doing a great job. You know, and they know when I come out of my office and I'm like, hey. So, oh, yeah, so we got the spreadsheets. They were gonna pull it in on Google and I need you to put them together in one, you know? Just they smile and they do it. They're incredible, um, you know, but it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's all added. Every bit of it is added.
Yeah.
And again, the emotions are at, you know, people are feeling all kinds of feelings and they're entitled to those feelings and that. Um, those are a part of everybody's experience right now. So people feel very strongly and then some of them are deeply upset by these requirements. And, you know, we are an agent of those people do, you know, making their requirement happen. So, you know, they express their feelings and that's part of the, you know, we work through that. So, um, so that's what's going on and, you know, you know, we are, we are being successful here. But that's how these executive orders roll to us. Massachusetts is doing an interesting thing, um, for anybody who wants to weigh in on this. You know, when they come to local boards, you don't have control, but the state does. And Massachusetts is allowing close contacts to continue to go to school. Um, and they're doing that through like a testing. They're providing the testing so the kids who are close contacts can continue to go to school. And this is under the premise that most of the schools are not, um, the spreaders, you know, that children are generally in our school system are not the ones that are, you know, it's not in the schools that the transmission is current. So they're, that they don't have to do the things in Connecticut. Now, the other side to that is that they say, but we are successful because of the things we're doing. So that's the, we will soon know in Massachusetts based on what's happening for them, whether their methodology yields the best result for this or not. And if it does, then you might see this shift in a month or two in contact tracing. If that changes, the whole thing changes. So it could be different for people in about a month, for at least the kids, you know, but staffs will have these requirements that we have to talk about.
Well, that rolls into my second point. I, I hope that we do see some encouraging information from that, cause you know, especially young kids who can't get vaccinated, they go out, you know, and they have to quarantine for a couple of times, you know, pretty soon it's close to a month of school that they've missed. And, you know, I, I completely get Christina's concerns and other concerns raised by board members, you know, about, about what to do and offering some sort of alternatives. I, I'm interested to hear more about that discussion. I'm not exactly sure what, how I feel about that, but, but it is, you know, it is a real concern. Missing that much school, especially, you know, students are asymptomatic. It just feels, it feels like a loss, you know, to be frank about that. Is there, do we have any numbers on quarantines more specifically for a district?
Well, you mean like as of now?
Yeah.
I, I would, I'm gonna give a rough estimate of. See, the last group was about fifteen or sixteen, but the other ones, um, they were bigger, but others came off. So fuzzy numbers, thirty.
Okay.
You know, from the beginning to now, what I put out there, there were ones that I took that off because they then showed evidence of vaccination or things like that.
Yeah.
Much better than last year, uh, in a week, we would have two identifications of like thirty each or, or something, or even any higher than that. Someone was fifty, sixty. So the numbers are much lower and they'll continue to get lower, but, um, you know, I've, I've played out a lot of paradigms and really tried to work out a lot of options. And, you know, another one, like, what if we bust kids in and the concept of close contacts, but all being in a classroom together and now, what if we could get them all in, you know, one place and have them have a bright day? The issue is which staff member wants to work with a bunch of kids who might turn positive right away? What if they did turn positive? They'd take out the whole room or close to it, or at least a bunch of the room. So now you've got close contacts who now became positive and have that period extended, but they're out. So now you have the out and the in, you have the out program and the in program. Um, and so logistically, you know, and, and predictability wise, you could have the people that you've tried to, if you're lucky enough to get one that's willing to do that, that person could be ticking up. And now the one that's physically in person is not gone, you know, they're quarantined now. And so there's too many ways that you can get quarantined right now. You can be quarantined if you're, you know, symptomatic, you're quarantined, foot contact, you know? So, um, there, there are many more options though too. Like if a parent now with the child symptomatic, you can get a test and return if you are, you know, alternative diagnosis. When they get a test for symptomatic, you can come back. A close contact, you know, you can come back if you test on the fifty-seventh day, you can return on the eighth day. That was better than the fourteen days before, you know, that step last year was mainly part of it. Last year was like fourteen days. So we have a lot of post-traumatic stress about what last year was, but the, the number of days is much lower now. The options for getting back are much higher and there were people assigned to help. The one thing that was really clear from the state of Connecticut's perspective, which is if they weren't fucking on both sides of their mouth would be more clear. The hybrid option is a failure. It is a splitting of energy and resources that has an impact on every kid in that room and it's not a good one. So like, I know the temptation is to do something like that, but it is not the, the thing, you know? We will have some stumbling, but that would have a magnified impact. And there, they are, through all their data, they are showing what that impacted. But they're so, you know, afraid to commit that they'll say both things at the same time. You know, in the beginning, the thing to keep in mind is they had a law against remote learning at the beginning of the summer. You know, they actually passed a law that said you should not have it all, and then they flipped, you know, around and all over on that, and back and forth on that, you know? So, you know, to some extent, we have to take this horse into our own reins and say, okay, so this is what we're doing. And we're gonna do this well, you know, we're gonna stumble a little bit here, but this is what we're doing. And we're gonna ride just through the years so we don't impact every classroom on and off, on and off throughout. Um, that's really crucial that we don't have that kind of unpredictability. So.
Let's go to Plora here. I know she's been sitting there waiting.
Not to take up too much time, but I want to say. So, um, I don't, I don't think it's a secret that I think that the quarantines are completely unnecessary at this point, um, with asymptomatic kids. It was hard. I talked to a parent today, uh, and she told me she felt like she was in March of twenty twenty again with, um, her child being quarantined. So when I see the emails and I see that twenty kids are being quarantined, my, you know, my questions are around like, why are we quarantining healthy children? Why can't they test to come back? And I know this is all at the state level. It's just one of those things that it's like, if we're gonna advocate to the state for anything, if you wanna unmask your kids, if you wanna do anything, you have to get rid of the quarantines. I mean, that's really the only way to do it. And I think there's a light on the horizon with masks not doing it. I can understand like, you know, oh, let them do it first and then let's, you know, see how it goes. I, I do understand that. Um, and I think I could probably take a lot of this conversation to the communications committee meeting next Tuesday. We actually moved it, I'd say to work commitment, but sounds like it was good timing because you're gonna have more information on the twenty-seventh, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So it'll give us more to talk about, um.
Yeah, I mean, you know, right on, right.
So long story short, I guess if twenty kids are quarantined, you know, if I see that email, let's say for true. Like how, is there any holes in the system? Like how are those kids within three feet of each other? Like why? It, it just seemed like a big number to me.
Yeah, well, um, I think that, I'm trying to remember those two, those two groups, you know?
It was for true, okay, so it's basically.
So it's, you know, broader. And then you have to think that, you know, the way that this works is it's every environment. So it's the bus, it's cafeteria, it's the special, it's the classroom. So in the classroom, it's three feet. And the bus is six feet, the cafeteria is six feet, and the specials, it would be, you know, six feet. So um, and it's multiplied by every environment that they're in, you know? So, um, so that's how you get to that number. And essentially what happens is you know, right now, um, I look at my phone every couple of minutes and what would pop up on my phone, because we've got it set up so that it wires right to my phone. Cause I'll get these updates as people submit. And I'll see, and I scan it right away. Is this asymptomatic? Is this a close contact? Is this a COVID positive? It's a COVID positive. I have to drop everything and go over there and start working on that. Um, when that happens, the nurse and I work very closely, um, and the nurses do an incredible job. Um, I have the authority to instruct, you know, you know, people to do certain things. So, you know, we'll send out notifications, people respond, then, um, you know, the classroom teacher responds, um, special spot, they do a fantastic job. The teachers are in all the pairs and all the staff are lifting a lot of weight, doing a lot of things, but they then report back, you know? Okay, Tony was, you know, in period one, he was sitting within three feet of Tony in this classroom, you know, Sophia and Walt are now within that three feet. Christina just got out of bed. So when they submit the information form, because they're sent an immediate notice, it happens very soon after I get this, tell me who's in the, in the circle. And so I get the names, um, we get the list, we process the list, we compare it against the vaccination sheets and take off anybody who we have a record of being vaccinated. And then at the end of that whole process, I have to do uploads to Power School and then download the five five and then message with that five five. Describe to the authority, through text, a voice and a email, what the protocol is and what's going on, and then refers them back to both the school and my number if they need articulation. And then I will text back and forth to parents if they, you know, have questions or wondering what. That's how that list gets generated. And so, um, it's staff telling me who on a particular day at a particular time was in quarantine. So I'm not in a position to say, you must be wrong. You know what I mean? I pay what they say. Um, and I have to, like the health district says, you know, it's not my decision to make whether you're telling me something I grew. And if I ask you that and you reported, then that is what I pack on. And that's generally, it's, uh.
Are you all set?
I'm good. I could go all day, so I'll.
All right. So, um, a few different questions. So along the lines of what, uh, Jacob was saying, um, what happens in the event that a child is quarantined so much that, you know, they've missed their school, that to the point where they need to be held back?
Well, so at this point in time, um, you know, last year, we had, uh, the, we were in a position where, um, staff was going out as well as students fairly regularly. So a lot of times the impact would be staff impact too. We were completely out of school and everybody was spreading it to everybody, you know? At this point, um, a much, much, much smaller population of people is, is potentially spread much smaller. And the transfer from somebody who has vaccination, while possible to be a crossover case is, is comparatively statistically rare. So I, you know, we are going to in the beginning have some people that are in and out, but what, what they get is they get that more personalized attention of that associate educator works, you know, with them. Um, if there is a way as we move forward, for instance, um, that we can loosen these rules, that, you know, the truth of the matter is that, you know, people's energy is best directed at the state with the suggestion respectfully that contact tracing based on our experience does not have to require a child to be out. Because any other extrapolation of that hurts the kids. So if we put a kid out in quarantine, there's a kid, if we put, um, uh, if we, you know, try to hybrid a classroom, it hurts all the kids in the classroom because the teachers will tell you, and that's why the CDA, it's not, can't really afford this. Um, that that hybrid split remote all the time, camera on stuff just degrades education. And that's what the state will tell you to with the data that it's putting out. So, you know, the, the true and most beneficial choice right now would be for us to change how we contact trace. The people who control that are not in this room. And any abstraction of that that requires mass quarantine when there isn't the statistics to support it hurts us. So if we're gonna continue to be hurt, then we, we have to do our best to make that the least impact possible. And there's two ways to do that. Get many more people vaccinated so that, that we don't have to put them out. And, um, to not make that quarantine impact, impact an exponentially larger number because, you know, we were trying to do something two different ways that can't really be effectively done that way.
So that's gonna actually bring me to two. So that's going to actually bring me to two, two separate things. So with, with the associate educator, is there a way to just, or why couldn't we just put a passive camera in classroom? So these kids are getting some exposure that way in addition to.
Well, because there's really no such thing. I mean, so if it's, if they're, you know, I don't think that's more beneficial than the associate educator reaching out. Here's what the child is doing well with, here's what the child is struggling with and I'll engage with you personally. So if you're struggling with a certain thing and, you know, your parents are saying that, you know, there's a particular piece of that that's hard. You can be engaged with personally versus, I understand this algebra problem. I can't even ask a question and this is going on. Um, I'm not asking it, do we turn the mics on? Do we not turn the mics on? If we do turn the mics on, I get to ask a question. They're split trying to focus on the technology. They don't get as far in a class that doesn't, you know, they don't get to their pacing guides. It's not moving it forward as fast. So what happens is, you know, five or ten quarantine kids affects fifty to seventy other kids. And the fifty or seventy other kids compromise their education for weeks at a time. Because it's on, then it's off, then it's back on again, then it's off again. The teacher never fully is able to, you know, keep that going in one set class. And the child that is quarantined, they come out of their quarantine and they go into hybrid classes. So they get out of their quarantine and they already had this up through the quarantine. Now they're in a class that's split, it's hybrid and it's not moving as fast.
Right, but I'm not talking about, about split, like doing a split hybrid class. What I'm talking about is having just a passive camera.
Well, then, then how am I understanding? If I can't ask questions in a passive camera about an algebra problem, how, how am I helped? So I don't understand what's going on, but I can't engage with anybody. And I have to shift the paradigm of the resource to doing something else. A passive camera doesn't do anything in terms of me interacting at all. I'm not interacting at all. And so if I'm getting lost, I'm getting further and further lost, you know. So, you know, again, this isn't about like, uh, every one of these options, unless we can alter contact tracing is a negative option. It's just.
Least evil option.
Right. What is the, what is the least of the evils? What is the thing that will have the, the least negative impact? This does not mean that there is no negative impact to quarantine. It means that if we have to turn those cameras on again, you're going to magnify the impact of the, you know, of the loss of learning to every classroom that that camera is on. And we saw that, the evidence of that is last year. There is, there is a tremendous amount of evidence about how much of a failure that was. And that's why they tried to start with laws and then succumb to the political pressure and then threw it all on our backs. They were supposed to have a remote learning option from the state. There was supposed to be guidance. It's not happening. So, you know, the bottom line is we're left to fend with people's frustrations. And, you know, I think that if people want to focus energy, um, some of that energy heading at the idea of why we are still contact tracing, the way we're contact tracing. When we have more vaccinations, a better chance of not spreading it than we did last year, you know what I mean? Like, yeah. And there's not real data to support that they're spread within schools. It makes sense to modify our contact charts. Any other option is a, is a negative option. It's just how negative. So I don't want a child to come out of quarantine and go into a hybrid class. Because coming out of quarantine and going into the hybrid means the teacher's splitting the tension again. And ask any of them, just ask and don't even rely on what I'm telling you. Go ask a teacher. How did that go? Were you able to get as far as you needed to get? Could you teach the kids as well as you could have taught them in person? Was there, I will bet you anything that the vast majority are going to say, no, I couldn't. There was a lot of learning loss. I could not split the energy or the attention. I'm messing with this, it's dying, there's, no things going, I stopped the class to do this. You know, if we have to do it because people are dying and there's no vaccines, then we have to do it. We don't have to do that this year. We have some post-traumatic stress about what it looked like last year to be out for fourteen days and then another fourteen days and then another fourteen days. But the typical one now is far fewer people and it's more like five, five to five to eight days or ten days. It's far less time by far fewer people and I don't want us to compromise a vast majority of classrooms because we have this negative thing that we have to do.
Okay, and I have one last question. I don't need to take up too much time, but when vaccines are available and there's been enough time for parents who want to get their kid, their child's vaccinated, the opportunity to do so. Do we foresee a possibility of having the quarantine go away?
Well, I think that two things are going to happen that'll change the trajectory. But this is my, my opinion and my thoughts about.
Right, right. Not holding you.
One, when, you know, if Massachusetts is successful, people will be looking at that and going, well, why aren't we doing this? Um, and two, um, you know, I think that, uh, there have been many children that have had no quarantine at all. Uh, and those children are typically the ones that are vaccinated. And the ones that are getting sick and getting more impacted are the ones that are unvaccinated. And to some extent right now, that K five population has no choice.
Right.
But soon they will. So if we're looking out two months and that choice is available, I see this becoming an even smaller problem. In which case, I think the state will feel safer. You know, modify contact. So I see possibly with enough pressure and enough vaccination that the state will change its stance on contact tracing, which if that happens, we're not having this conversation. Because the child isn't put out unless they're actually physically sick. Right, they get tested, they're in the classroom, they get tested, they're in the classroom. That's, that's a great way, I think, to do it. But, um, that will, I think that's two, three months out where that really starts to shift.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take up too much time. Thank you.
Um, I know we're gonna have, but to follow up on that, what about these absences that are counting for the quarantines having the absentee? Is there something that we can? They're excused, but I know those letters go out.
I mean, right now, we're probably just, people are catching up with process, but excused, excused absence are different than verified. So you usually will get a letter, you know, on a verified absence and those usually accumulate ultimately. And most people never get there, but all absences that are verified or not verified add up to truancy. But anything that's excused is subtracted from your total amount. So no one will get to, to a truancy because of these, these are excuses. Now, we may need to, you know, someone might get a letter, you know, and then we go back and recode it. But, uh, but that's how this works and, you know, they will be.
So I completely get what you're saying that we need to do the quarantines and all this, but I was intrigued by your, um, idea.
The passive camera?
Passive camera. Okay, that's what I couldn't remember. Sorry, that's what I told you. I get what you're saying. Hybrid is awful. It doesn't work. It's terrible. But now for, let's say, high schools and you're, you've got world history. And your teacher is, you know, doing a lecture, if you will. Is there a way to even record some of it so that a student who is put into quarantine can then access that on their Google Doc? Watch some of it and then work with their associate educator?
They may, they may have certain parts of the class that have some aspect of, um, you know, videos that are linked to certain things kids need to look at from the lab or whatever.
I was thinking more in terms of like when the teacher's actually.
Time that they're taking to make that video is time that they're not taking to move forward the grid.
But I'm not even thinking they're making a video. I'm picturing like a camera in the corner of the room that's just.
It doesn't have to be managed.
It doesn't.
Or doesn't fail or crash or doesn't need to be angled or if I'm moving around the room, you know.
You know, college when you miss a class.
I'm just being, I'm not trying to be contrarian. I'm saying these are the true things though. So with these owls, that's a thousand dollars. If you want to put an owl in every room, this thing. The, the thing is that it sounds like it would work, but, but it really doesn't. And I'm, I'm just pushing it out. I'm going to be very firm about, you know, saying that definitively it doesn't. You know, you aim it and it's not capturing the full, uh, you know, um, the full board. You have to go and keep modifying it or you forget where it's aimed and you're teaching and it's not picking up what you want. Or the audio is not great or it's fuzzy or it's different or it crashes or the kid's computer crashes. Or your computer crashes or because it doesn't have enough memory cache ability, it crashes or it slows or it lags or the, you know, this is not.
I was thinking more of a recording that would then just be put on, um, on Google Classroom.
Somebody has to move it to a file or a directory. When you do download it, it's still streaming of some kind. It's still taking bandwidth. They have to have enough bandwidth to get it without being choppy. Google, you can load video to it, but it's not a video service. So you can load it in a drive, but if too many people grab it, it's all, you know.
Yeah, but if you're only having so many kids quarantined, you're not going to have.
Ask the teachers, just ask.
You know, I think it's more just like if the student would like to plug on to just listen to your.
Someone has to manage that. Someone has to turn it on. Someone has to make sure it's there. I mean, ask a teacher. You're asking us to pretend, just ask him. They'll tell you it doesn't work.
I just, I know that they do that a lot with college. I know with my, my daughter's classes, the professor was recording their things and then she could watch it whenever. So that, that's kind of what I, what my mindset were thinking. So then. Completely losing out on.
Well, colleges, they do do that, you know, you know, and they've done that even prior to the pandemic. They also have a really different structure and college professors have Tuesdays off and drink some coffee in between their classes that are every other day. You know, it's not the same. A high school teacher has five, seven straight classes, you know, these are straight classes. They have to go from one to the other, turn on the camera, turn off the camera, transition from one class to another. The thing is, anything that's spent doing that is spent away from doing, uh, other content. And it adds up and the evidence of that adding up is the learning loss across the state almost ubiquitous. So it's not like, um, I don't think teachers would have a problem with it if it were that easy. And so don't rely on what I'm saying. Go ask them.
Like I said, I totally understand. Best case scenario was no more quarantines and then we don't even have to worry about this. But that's kind of what I think all of us are thinking. If you're, if you're missing, you know, seven possible school days, no matter what grade you're in, that is tough. So, but, you know, it sounds like we've got at least the associate educator, you know, plan that will hopefully, you know, be successful and, and, uh, and hopefully again, like you said, I'm going to be watching Massachusetts closely.
Totally understand and respect it. Miss Griffin asks great questions and so does Ford and others thinking about this. I get it. You know, here would be my, my paradigm would be to increase our core of the because if you have enough of those individuals, they're doing real time instruction and support and much more frequently. Which I think that they are going to be able to do. But the more of them that we have, the more support that the children have. And that's something that we can use C, C R F funds for is, um, Actually, it's a pretty good case in point. But I have a lot more, you know, opportunity to, to stumble on this. You're very understanding people. So. Try clicking it on. So I'm gonna hold on, but, um, you know, that is something we could do is, uh, you know, we could do that. We could expand and allow and provide for more of that, which means that when those quarantines come in, they're broken out to more people. Those people act on it even quick, more quickly. And they set up, you know, sessions because, um, you know, there are things that many of these kids can do and then there are things that they might struggle with. They being there for the things in particular they struggle with, help them bridge that, that. And that week will be less and less and less. You know, that need will be less and less and less as the months go on. So we don't want to build a castle that we have to then maintain forever, you know.
Well, we'll say, we'll go to Dana on this castle here and then we're going to, um, wrap this up. Because it is already after nine and we still have a lot to do with the turf field and all of our board action. So I think that we are leaving this castle. So go ahead, Dana.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm trying to talk softly. I remember last time I said it sounded like, it was really loud. Um, I guess some of my questions would be Dr. Willa and in your staff meetings with, um, your administrators and your educators. Is, is this, um, a resounding feedback from your educators as well? I mean, because I, I do know that it was a struggle for them, you know, to look at a computer, to look up, to be in the classroom and do those different things. I mean, has this been a topic of conversations with your staff on how they feel as well regarding synchronous versus asynchronous?
Um, yes. I don't think, you know, people should just ask them, you know, if you want that perspective. I think they will say fairly conspicuously that this was not a success. You know, it was not something that, um, they would recommend and that it had an impact on what they were able to do in a classroom for thousands. So when I say this to you, the reason why, you know, I, I say it with maybe the passion that I say it with is, you know, we've seen this bad. You know, i- in, in a crisis, it's necessary when there's no other option. You know, we, we, we are not talking apples to apples here. The reason why that was necessary last year was that no one could be here, right? It was that no one could be here. It wasn't that someone had. So whether a child was COVID positive or a close contact or not, they were remote. Forced remote last year in a number of different ways for a variety of reasons. In this year, the ones that are remote are the ones that have the potential to be infected. They, they, they know it's not high, which is why I want that to change. So, you know, the ones that are remote now are remote because they have the chance of becoming ill. Everybody was remote last year because there was no choice. Everybody had to be. So you had to use those cameras, you know, because everybody in the whole school system was out. If we have to reconceptualize this, I don't think it would be let's put cameras in every classroom. It would be something more like, you know, when they're out, support them. In the past, if the child got norovirus or a child, you know, you know, norovirus is a stomach flu. Is out for five days, you know, maybe got the, the flu itself is out for two weeks. They were out for two weeks and there wasn't an associate educator who was helping them. Now, understandably, there's more kids impacted by quarantine. But, you know, it's more of a medically related type of thing than it is a, everybody has to be out of school. This is the only option we have. So, you know, we just have to keep in mind that, you know, that, that these are both that, you know, bad things. But the greater one would be the one that impacts that person repeatedly throughout the year or, you know, the larger number.
And then, sorry, just I'll wrap it up. And just to be clear, those associate educators can schedule one-on-one time um, with those, with those students and those parents and the, the teacher to make sure if there's a specific subject or topic that they're struggling on or can have some sort of curriculum set up. Um, I, I, the way I've understood that, the way you've been talking tonight is that it's kind of, we're almost going to individualize it based on the respective students' needs during those, that timeout.
I understand the more of them that we have, the, the fact right now, uh, you know, we have one assigned to every program, every school. So, and, you know, we have another one potentially coming on for tomorrow. So, you know, right now, when a, uh, when a group of quarantine students, you know, become, it becomes necessary, I send that list to the school's administration and to this individual. You know, and they, then they get the list and they start doing outreach. They reach out to the teacher, they reach out to the family. You know, what can we do? How can we, you know, make this work for the child? Um, and that is something that, you know, that, um, we have in place now and that'll only get better. So, yeah, again, it's not, it's not preferable to actually being there. But the other pieces, some of these kids are sick. You know, so if they are actually sick and they're fairly symptomatic, they also have an option, you know, where they, you know, if they're identified as a close contact or that in some way related to COVID, you have the option of being supported, you know. So there's, there's a lot of support available. It's just not looking exactly the same as that synchronous remote thing.
Okay, all right. And then, um, my last thing would be, um, this is obviously an ever-evolving and ever-changing situation too. So, I mean, I understand, um, that nothing's going to replace being inside of the classroom. We want all of our kids in front of those educators. Um, so as we have our monthly COVID committee meetings with, there's two board members. There's two board members on that and you have stakeholders throughout the entire school community as well as Eastern Highland Health District. And making these provisions as we kind of go through this month over month. We're not, um, obviously pigeonholed into this, into this format. Uh, as things change, as different things change with what's going on in our climate right now, we have the flexibility to do so. Um, the goal is to make it a more cohesive learning environment and all. The goal is to make it a more cohesive learning environment in all aspects. I mean, it's, it's a tough situation, period. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that as well. And that's all I have. Thanks, Ashley.
As options become available, we'll explore them. You know, we're just going to keep working on it to try to find the best in a tough situation.
Yes, we do. And then this is it. Moving on.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, um, it is a school night. Do we want to let our student representatives go?
Oh, absolutely. Feel free.
Just wanted to bring that up. I'm sorry I didn't say something sooner.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, if you want to say, you can smile on me. Yeah, I, I just wanted to at least give you the opportunity. Because I know this is exciting. Thank you for coming.
Now we are going with the cold TikTok. Yes, we are all set. We're moving on. Let's do this turf field discussion as short as possible.
You know, as you know, the Board of Ed, we need to discuss turf field and our field some ground screening. The town council did cover this. They did post what was posted to the council, to the board. And you also received a document, these, these, I myself, that also articulated some of the history and, you know, the situation. So I'm here to support you.
Well, I put it on the agenda, so I don't, you know, I'm not sure. We, we had the meeting and we're talking about meeting with, you know. Well, that's just, I think the update was more or less that the town council, I had sent an email to them and said, let's try to get some dates. She just emailed, what was it, two days ago, back saying like, here's a few, no, it was less than that. I, I blacked asleep. It was probably yesterday. Wrote back and said, hey, this is a couple of days. And Dr. Will will be sending out a doodle poll to see exactly what works for us. Because they did pick, um, essentially Tuesday and Thursdays kind of roughly. And there was like one Wednesday mixed in. So, um, they gave us their dates that worked for them. And so we'll just do a poll and see what works for us. And then we will schedule that for a joint discussion. Anything else? We're good? We are good. Okay, let's move on to the, um, let's raise on reports. I mean, you already went through FFC. Anything else we need to add in there? Policy you met right before.
Yep, we met today, went over policy 630, which is parent-teacher communication. There's some additional information that's required that, that really has kind of a big deal on how that goes. So we tabled that one. Then we went through policy 3010, my appreciation to Miss Griffin for, for attending and offering her wisdom in that. I think we were able to discuss through those last couple little tweaks. And should be seeing that come back to the, the board as a whole in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, I thought there was three that you did.
There was, uh, but Dr. Willard and I decided before the meeting that that third one just wasn't quite ready. So we postponed that.
So I just remember looking at that. The communications you are doing, your meeting on next Tuesday, I think I said earlier. Curriculum.
We are meeting on the sixth.
So I remember that from last meeting too. Okay, um, I think that's it, right? Oh, Birch Grove, Dana, do you want to say anything about Birch Grove? Because I mean, I don't know. I guess you're still meeting until the meeting, but you know, we have the grand opening.
There's always.
She probably wants to step up for a minute. So I think we're okay with Birch Grove. I mean, we went to, it was great. It was, it was beautiful. Everything's looking good. I think they said there were a couple of little leftover change orders here and there, just things, but, um.
I love the birch tree wallpaper.
It was beautiful.
Very nice. You did a great job.
And I mean, you know, and Tepdo did a great job. Soul celebration.
So I think we're good. Okay. I do not have your personal report. Let's just get into this board action because let's, let's get it done. Policy 1010.
Mari, I move to approve the updates to policy 1010. Use of school facilities is documented in the superintendent's agenda item K1 for the September 22nd Board of Education meeting.
Would you be ready to tell a second?
Okay, any discussion on this particular policy? And like everyone's okay? Okay, so let's go ahead and do the roll, vote. So Jacob.
Hi.
Madhu.
Hi.
Reenie.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
My I as well, therefore these changes will take into effect. Thank you very much. Let's do the 1020 policy.
Jacob, Mari, I move to approve the updates to policy 1020. Possession of deadly weapons or firearms is documented in the superintendent's agenda item K2 for the September 22nd Board of Education meeting.
Tony, hold second.
Any discussion on this particular one? Okay, let's do from a poll. So Jacob.
Hi.
Madhu.
Hi.
Reenie.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Which is cool, nice.
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
My I as well, therefore this motion passes as well. So this is, okay. Let's do the 5040 for transportation.
Jacob, Mari, I move to approve the updates to policy 5040. Transportation is documented in the superintendent's agenda item K3 for the September 22nd Board of Education meeting.
Would you be ready to tell a second?
Okay, any discussion on this one? Is not, um, let's do a vote. So Jacob.
Hi.
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 Dana?
Hi.
My I as well, therefore this motion passes unanimously as well. Oh, the Title IX, and I did watch the 89 slides.
It was awesome.
It was awesome. Actually, I really did enjoy it. I thought it was like, why wouldn't somebody watch it?
Exactly.
I liked it.
Yeah, it'll probably change.
It might change, but it really broke it down. It was, it was great. I mean, the last few slides were more of a, you know, more discussion happening. But it was a, it was a good presentation.
It did, you're right. It did a really good job of explaining why.
So, so if anyone, I highly recommend it.
I mean, that's, and that's kudos to Shifman. Goodness, that's.
It was great. Like I said, 89 slides later. So let's go down this pathway.
Jacob, Mari, I move to approve the updates to policies 4060, sex discrimination, sexual harassment in the workplace personnel, and 5070, sex discrimination and sexual harassment, students and their associated regulations.
Tony, hold second.
Any discussion? Let's just do all those in favor. I, Dana, let's just get you saying what you want to say on the things that you're over there.
Hi.
I as well, therefore this passes unanimously as well. Okay, uh, let's do the 5080.
Christina Lord, motion to approve the updates to policy 5080. Student discipline is documented in the superintendent's agenda item K5 for the September 22nd Board of Education meeting.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Because this one had a few changes on here. Good and we're all set, so all those in favor? Dana, let's get you on here.
Hi.
And it passes unanimously as well. Okay, um, let's move on to the public participation portion. Um, you have two minutes for the timer. Uh, Dr. Willard, I know that you love finding that on your computer somewhere. If there are any members of the public, if you could please raise your hand and I will call upon you. And if you could please, um, list your name and address for the record, we will go from there. Oh, look at that. Notifications only will show the PC is awake.
And of course, you know, when we have the timer ready to go, no one participates.
It's the lucky time.
I have the trouble that it's crashing everybody else.
Well, you probably want to get your computer running here. You got the two minutes and, yeah, you're good. Um, okay, I will close that off. Um, so points of information, uh, if any board members would like to say anything at this time.
Birch Grove was a tough one. Uh, it was, it was really cool walking in and seeing it finally finished. It was, I just can't speak enough, highly enough about Tepdo and how the, how well they did. There was tons of volunteers, you know, it, it went really smoothly.
Okay, Jacob?
Yeah, no, just stack on that. It was a great event. It was a lot of fun to go there. And that's going to be a great asset for our talent, um, moving on for generations. So it was, it was a really special moment. That, and also I think if people had not seen the minutes of our previous meeting or watched that, they'd probably think we were kind of crazy, all those policies so bad.
There could be changes.
It was like it read three times, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, anyone else at this time? Okay, um, Dr. Willard, did you have anything that you want out of her future or you know, like that you want to? Perfect. Okay, so I.
Less than two seconds.
Seriously, yeah, everything. No? Okay. I do like joking with, you know, if you do have something, feel free.
Except not really.
Okay, so we're all good. So let's do, um.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. All those in favor? Dana, say hi.
Hi.
Here you go. Okay, so thank you everyone. Have a great night.